I declare this meeting in progress to Councilor Robert Brown on February 6th of 2020. Mr. Gordon, please hold your role.
Council President Montes is absent. Acting Council President Correa.
President.
Councilwoman Anthony.
Present.
Councilwoman Castillo is absent. Councilman Estinada.
President.
Councilwoman Harris.
President.
Councilman Iglesias.
President.
Councilwoman Curly.
Present.
Councilwoman LaFortuna.
Present.
Councilwoman Miller.
Present.
Councilman Nargucci absent. Councilwoman Ryan.
Present.
Councilman Salvatore.
President.
Councilman Taylor.
Thank you.
You have eleven present and three absent. You have a four-轮.
The invitation will be led by Council President Paul Jackson. Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we come to you on this very special night to ask that you grant us wisdom, knowledge, and to guide us as we make tough decisions in order to move us forward. We ask that you help us to always be loyal to those that entrusted us, to be their eyes and ears, and to represent them with dignity and respect, to guide us into always doing the right thing. Amen.
Amen. The invitation will be led by Council President Paul Jackson. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the Constitution, to the Constitution of America, and to the Constitution of the republic.
A proponent of item three, General Proceedings Number Two of the Regular Meeting of the City Council of July, January 16th, 2020.
Second. Motion second.
Second.
Please, 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 second. The vote. Polls in favor?
Aye.
Polls in both? The eyes out.
A point of honor to the mayor. Item four, communications from his honor to the mayor.
Mr. President, motion to waive the reading of items four and five and receive second.
Motion to waive the second, the communications of items four and five, and receive all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The eyes out.
Item six, communication from his honor to the mayor.
Mr. President.
Madam Leader.
Motion to waive the reading of items six through ten and refer to committee on finance.
Second.
Motion to waive the second to refer to committee on finance. Polls in favor?
Aye.
Polls in both? The eyes out.
Item eleven, Councilwoman Ryan, ordinance submitting Chapter 23, Streets, Sidewalks and Public Places, Article One, in general, all the code ordinances of the City of Providence to add Section 38, operation of streets and sidewalks.
Madam President, motion to waive, excuse me, to refer item eleven to committee on ordinances.
Second.
Refer to the committee of ordinances.
Resolution of resolutions, item seven.
Madam President, Mr. President. Mr. President.
Madam Leader.
Thank you. Motion to waive the reading of item twelve and refer to committee on urban redevelopment, renewal and planning.
Second, that motion.
Motion to waive the second and refer to committee on. Polls in favor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fortuna.
So, item twelve is, um... When all fails, go the whole soul. Um, so for item twelve, Michael Van Leesten was a dear friend of mine and a ray of inspiration for me. We would talk over the phone and laugh, and before we hung up, he would always say to me, "Here, but I am so proud of you." He was more than a board member, executive director of OIC, or a father. He was a community citizen, someone who was aware of and understands the broader issues that our community faced and his place in the community and his role in effective change. He was also, um... He was also a bridge builder, an architect of connections, and that is why so many of us believe that it would be appropriate to name the bridge after him. Although there are so many things that need to happen before the naming of the bridge occurs, one, we need to establish that that area is a park, which hasn't been established yet, and it needs to be vetted and goes through the appropriate committees. However, when we think about naming items or monuments in the city, we need to think about the role that those individuals play when renaming them. This is a bridge that was built, and the bridge symbolically connects the east side to the other side of the city, which we all know, the city has been divided for years. And many people don't realize that Michael Van Leesten, a family member of his, was one of the first African-Americans to graduate from Brown University. She also helped integrate um, classical high school. The day that they named Paige Robinson Ball after his aunt, I sat next to him and I watched tears flow down his eyes. So, within his legacy, his family, his community was always about building bridges. That was what he stood for, that's what he believed in, and that's what we should honor. So many times, we just name items because someone gave a significant amount of money, so we decide that we're going to name a building, name a park after them, but we never really think about the work that the person did in the community, the time that it took to connect people. One person with people, connect people. He went to Hope High School. He was a person of hope. Um, he lived off of Hope Street, and again, he connected people. And so, I do hope, once this goes into committee, that the whole council can join me, as well as the community, in supporting this effort to name the bridge after Michael Van Leesten. Because he was a true bridge builder, an architect of connection, a community member, an advocate, and someone who not only cared about the community, but was an agent of change. So, thank you, and I hope everyone can support that.
First of all, I want to thank my colleagues who stand tonight, and you drew such great expression of this man and who he was and how he has a legacy in our community. I want to take it a little bit further and say that I met Michael Van Leesten in the eighties. Um, in the eighties, the OIC, the old OIC, which is now the CCRI, is a prominent area, was what was a opportunity for folks like myself who needed to be able to create wealth and then create in a way that you work and job opportunities through the OIC, because of Mr. Michael Van Leesten. Through the OIC, because of Mr. Michael Van Leesten, visionary and visionary approach to labor and economic development. I would say he became a welder, and with that, was able to get my children to have the best education there was because of the fact that when you are able to, um, work, you use that opportunity to also move forward and be a visionary in what you would want to see happen and change. Because he was one of the people who were part of the original OIC and was able to create the OIC, I myself right now, uh, hold a gift and hold a skill that will never be able, uh, that I will never be able to lose because it was done through opportunity of me learning within my own community how to create opportunities for wealth and to be able to work and have income. So, I want to say that when I say wealth, when you're in deep poverty and you are able to make good money and you do really great things to change that, OIC was also a literacy program. It was also an opportunity for us to learn literacy, finance, and all kinds of other things. So, those bright ideas were set in place because of this gentleman and this man who always, always, like Councilwoman Fortuna said, looked at opportunities to pull people together, to be a bridge, like she said, a bridge, uh, bridge and people together and a connector. I, I, I would be amazed not to stand here and sort of let you know how I feel about this particular life, because I'm so happy that we have an opportunity to do something. Myself, I believe that we give flowers to people while we're here. That's my practice. But however, this is a great, and Councilwoman Fortuna did not necessarily back it. Who isn't that we are doing this for? Who isn't that we're making this bridge after? What was his legacy? What kind of person was he? What impact did he make on people's lives? And we can see tonight, as he showed up tonight, he's made impact on a lot of people's lives and have changed them, and through this, I will always be grateful. And I want to say that everywhere I went within my council and being in the presence of him, he always reminded people that, um, skills can take you to another level, and he always recognized that we are so well-known, that we're a successful welder, and I would be constantly, I would be still hearing you yesterday, and I am proud of that, and I can say that, uh, well, I hope, you know, some of the, but I'm proud of the fact that I was given that opportunity. So, for that reason, I want to support this audience, and I want us to have an opportunity to all come together and admit to, like Councilwoman Fortuna said, in the end of that, so, thank you for our team this end, and I would be amazed not to stand and give honor to such a great man. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the opportunity to my colleagues and to everyone as yet. Uh, it's a great honor to be able to stand here as a councilperson. I am very fortunate to be here and to live in a wonderful city of Providence and a wonderful state of Rhode Island. But that was not, it's been easy for me, but it was not for the people that came before me. So, I'm extremely thankful to the people that came before me, especially to a gentleman by the name of Mr. Van Leesten, a man of honor, a man of courage, a very inspirational, quite a good model. We have lost a great giant. So, it would be my honor to be able to cast a vote in his favor of naming this bridge. So, I am so looking forward for that day because the members' survey, it shows by the number of people here that have taken my place beforehand because that's the kind of many words. So, rest in peace. It'll be an honor to be able to vote in his favor. Thank you.
Mr. Gordon? Mr. President? If there's no objection from the, uh, from the sponsors, I would like to be known as their post sponsor on item.
Twelve.
Item number twelve, please. Thank you. Councilman Salvatore, Councilwoman Fortuna, if it's a fair decision, entire of the council?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
So do it. Item thirteen, Councilwoman Anthony. The Council of the Round Climate Crisis Campaign.
Mr. President.
Madam Leader.
Motion to waive the reading of items thirteen through twenty-two and pass the number of votes.
Second.
Motion to waive the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion?
Thank you. I rise and rise to speak in support of item number thirteen, the resolution endorsing the Environmental Council of Rhode Island's Climate Crisis Campaign. It's an urgent call to action. Continued increases in global temperatures will devastate human communities and natural ecosystems. For it will be hit particularly hard as temperatures have risen faster than in any other state in the U.S. We need to take immediate steps to dramatically reduce greenhouse gas emissions, create a just an ethical transition to a sustainable economy, invest in that definition of resilience to protect people and places we love. I'm so grateful for the work that the Environmental Council brought out and is doing to help us in this climate crisis campaign, and I urge yours to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Herron?
I'd like to introduce myself from twenty twenty-one and twenty-two. I'd like to introduce myself from twenty twenty-one and twenty-two.
So do it. Councilwoman Harris?
I would like to be a post sponsor. I would like to be a, um, I would be a sponsor of the sponsor of mine.
My place is, um, driving. I would like to post sponsor of some candidate of, um, of, 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 of,
It's a tax on housing. We stand on this floor as elected officials and we talk about affordable housing often. Mayor, mayors before, Mayor Lawrence have talked about affordable housing. We now have a responsibility to put our money where our mouth is. And that's taking back housing tax and allocating it for its intended purpose. And that's investing in the people who reside in Providence. The people who need it the most, and that's housing. They need housing. They need a warm, safe environment to rest their heads at night. And quite frankly, it's embarrassing that we receive phone calls from constituents all the time, asking for direction, asking for resources. And we all take those calls and say, yes, we have to do more. But we haven't taken the appropriate action to date. This is an actual item that we can take care of now by asking the mayor, in next year's budget, to allocate half of what we collected in the conveyance tax and invest those much needed dollars in affordable housing. This is the rocket science. Thirty thousand units over the next ten years is what the state of Rhode Island needs in housing, affordable housing. And in Providence, we do have our fair share of challenges. So this resolution again asks the mayor to invest what equates to a little over a million dollars in taxpayer money next year in affordable housing. In a, in a, in almost eight hundred million dollar budget, I don't think we're asking a lot to invest in some of our most vulnerable residents who just want a place to call home. Thank you. Thank you, Congressman.
First of all, we definitely support affordable housing throughout the city. I think it's very important. First of all, I think it's important to support affordable housing throughout the city. But part of what just with the present budget, I know that my council colleagues are supportive of this, this year's fiscal year budget, is that we were able to achieve our positive goals. As you know, one of the things when the mayor submitted his budget was a tax increase on the most vulnerable in the city of Providence. As you know, the city council, the majority, stood together to lower that burden on the most vulnerable people in the city of Providence. Albeit, the most affluent people in Providence also receive taxpayer also. What does concern me is, I know we feel that the fiscal nature of the season, finances is perfect, things are going great, and we have a lot of ways of paying our bills, we're making our contribution to our pension account. But we still have a major unfundability. We still have a shrinking economic class. We still have a shrinking tax base. But we do have a growing nonprofit base, non-tax base. So he says, well, that's good on that end. But the jobs that they produce and the people that go to those jobs don't live in the city. Majority of them live out of the city. So it's really important that we really be judicious. Now, whenever we talk about saying we would let's do X amount, or we'd let's do a money that we do receive or generate, we should always have a fiscal note. And I understand it's dry and boring, the whole financial thing. And I understand it's sexy and exciting to talk about what is the it issue. But I think it's also important that we cannot forget that sometimes when you try to achieve something here, you can achieve some harm there. So I just ask that as we move forward with this, that a fiscal note be attached to this resolution. So we understand what is the positive and negative. And it's right, the council's fully informed, and we understand what it can and can't do. Now, on your, on your desk, while you see this, a tax stabilization board. This year's fiscal year, this budget which has passed, as lunch, as I said, one of the things that has been helpful to our taxpayers, to our taxpayer, is that, that the tax stabilization that this council, some of you actually will feel you from the past term or term before, those tax stabilizations now, those properties are coming online. And every year, more and more properties are coming online to give us more taxes in those tax stabilizations, which also then give us relief to the people who are the most vulnerable in the city, i.e. the homeowners. And I think it's important that we don't lose sight of the homeowner that's struggling in the city of Providence right now, who has a home, is working two different jobs, and trying to make ends meet. So I'm actually far more conservative when it comes to money because I believe that a city that spends in a, I don't want to put it in a, any, um, spendthrift manner is a city that is destined for failure. Just in the past, it's important that we stay focused. My new council colleagues, a colleague at council recently, this term, just recently, you will inherit a city that still has a dangerous financial situation. It's very important that as the students of the city's financial system and structure, that you maintain a certain approach where we do not jeopardize, in this case, some of the positive problems that's occurring. And we have to always remember that because if you do, it's not going to be me, by the way, it will be all of you in the next term, where you will have to make a truly hard decision to raise taxes far greater, far higher, to the most vulnerable in the city of Providence. That'll be your decision the next term. It won't be mine, I'm letting you all know what is ahead of you. We need to stay positive because we always financially prudent in how we move forward. I commend Councilman Salvatore for his initiative to promote low income housing. It's important. I myself represent the largest low income housing unit in the city of Providence, and I have constituents who are most vulnerable. And I'm always doing very hard to protect them. It's important. But we also have to, can't forget the people who also met next up off. We don't want them to lose their homes, their households, their jobs. So I just ask that, that we have assistance to fiscal note. He's correct. The budget is X amount of money. But as you all know, there's only a certain percentage that actually is discretionary in this budget. Most of it is already accounted for. Half of it's already accounted for the school apartment. And as all of you know, you will be receiving a bill the upcoming months. Now the school apartment is taken over by the state. You will receive two things. A new dynamic of the school apartment and a new bill for the school apartment. In a bill that you will have no choice to pay, which means you will have no choice to raise taxes to pay that bill. You have no control over it. You have folks who have chosen that path. But remember that. There are certain things that these budget drivers that you have literally no control over, and more than half of this budget now, you have no control over. So the only portion we have left is the tax one folks. The people that live, that live next door to you. Your neighbor, your family, your friends. So I just ask that we always be prudent when we're talking about just simply spending money and not having a fiscal note. As we move forward, it's all positive. But let's not lose sight of being this. There's two different types of folks. You can be a politician, or you can be a legislator. And I understand it's far more exciting to be a politician in the state of governmental affairs. Being a legislator is always a more difficult path. Choose wisely. Think about it. Move forward to a resolution soon here. But always think about the financial consequences that you shall inherit the upcoming budget in budgets moving forward and next term. I'm asking, I'm letting you all know now, so I want to make sure that all of you are well aware of where you are going, or the path that you are taking. Because I have seen most councils take a similar path, and then later on, not understand why they have to make such horrible, horrific decisions concerning tax policy. That's all. So with that, I say move forward and choose wisely.
Thank you, Congressman Eglios. Councilman Forte.
Thank you, Councilman, for your words reminding us of, you know, the fiscal, um, the fiscal responsibility and what fiscal burden our city. I do want to say that, um, housing is not an it's matter. Housing is a, is a right. Everyone should have the right to affordable housing. And the reality is, is that majority of our residents in the city of Providence need affordable housing. Over, over eighty percent of our residents are cost burden, which means they are paying over thirty percent of their income on housing. The median household income in our city is about, is less than thirty-five thousand dollars per year. When you do include, um, the more affluent sides of the city, it's about sixty thousand dollars per year. We do not live in a city where everyone is rich and affluent. But everyone deserves the right to affordable housing. So this conveyance tax, the trust fund, and other future initiatives are ways to create opportunities for affordable housing. Affordable housing, people who might have access to affordable housing includes teachers. Some of them are, are people who work by, um, restaurants. Some of them are some of our council members or state legislators. They are people within our community. And so we need to find various strategies to mitigate the housing crisis, which includes allocating funds to develop additional housing opportunities for our residents. So being a politician or being a legislator requires the individual to think about the community these bills or these ordinances, legislation impact. And that community is our community. And the people within our community are not people who are extremely affluent, but they are people who deserve the right to affordable housing. So I do hope that we all think about a various methods and not see this as just an issue, but to see it as another opportunity to increase our housing stock or to increase opportunities for affordable housing for people within our community.
The House of Representatives, Mr. President. Councilman Salvatore.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Councilman Eglios, for noting the importance of providing a fiscal note. I certainly share that, um, that fiscal due diligence that we all require to perform as legislators. Look at item number forty-one, the dossier, the dossier. Uh, that is a report that the internal auditor provided at my request for all of us to look at. And what it provides is a breakdown of the conveyance tax retained by the city of Providence by the year. So we have some very smart people in City Hall who are financially astute, who can project how much we will receive by retaining our portion of the conveyance tax in Providence. You know, in twenty-ten, when I ran for public office, I promised to be a politician who would legislate responsibly. And I continue to keep that promise to date, based on requests that I received from constituents, based on my public policy positions. But it's striking to me that we continue as a city to talk about those so-called sexy issues, but don't have the willingness to do anything about it. We talk about treating people fairly. Let's provide them with a safe place to call home at night. Now, when you look outside of downtown Providence, you might not see homeless people. You might not see homeless people in your neighborhoods. There are shelters. That's not permanent housing. That's temporary housing. Maybe it's for a night, maybe it's for supplies, but it's not permanent housing. And every one of our neighborhoods and constituents rely on us as politicians to legislate and be responsible. So let's talk to the folks in the finance department, let's talk to the internal auditor, all very smart people who can project out what this will cost. Let me correct myself. It's not a cost. It's an investment. It's an investment to the people who reside in our city, and it's our responsibility to make sure that they have a place to call home every single day. Item passage of item number sixteen. And I hope this is just the beginning of actionable items that we as a legislative body can take to address the affordable housing crisis in Providence. Thank you.
So the man is, uh, does have a motion, uh, named second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have.
Reports from committees. Committee on Finance, Councilman John Jay is the chairman. Transmit the following with recommendations and statements.
Mr. President, I make a motion to waive the reading of items twenty-three through twenty-seven. Excuse me, twenty-five, and pass it for the first time on a roll call.
Second.
Motion, motion being second, pass on a roll call. Mr. Porter.
Council President Montos, absent. Acting Council President Correa.
Yes.
Councilwoman Anthony. Councilwoman Castillo, absent. Councilman Espinaud.
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilman Egliosi.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerwin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Fortune.
Aye.
Councilwoman Miller. Is absent. Councilman Narducci is absent. Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Salvatore.
I apologize, but we dispense with items twenty-three through twenty...
That is correct. Twenty-three through twenty-five.
Okay, uh, I'm voting aye on item twenty-three, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine.
This is twenty-three through twenty-five, all votes.
Aye on item number twenty-three, no on item twenty-four and twenty-five.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
You have, uh, ten ayes for item twenty-three and four nays. And you have nine ayes for item twenty-four and twenty-five and five nays. The... I'm sorry, five absent. I corrected it. Ten ayes, sorry, ten ayes for item twenty-three and four absent. You have nine ayes for item twenty-four and twenty-five, one no, and five and four absent also. The several items passed for the first time on a roll call. Transmit the following with recommendations and statements.
Senator Lee.
Mr. President, motion to waive the reading of items twenty-six and through twenty-eight, receiving.
That is approved.
Seconded motion.
Absent, received and approved.
Mr. President.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Mr. President, we will... Yes, I just want to take a moment, by the way. Um, it was a pleasure for the finance committee to host, um, the three candidates. Zasmo, Thomas, and Panda. I think it's very important to note that these individuals were willing to participate in this great city of Providence. I also have to commend the mayor and his staff because I've noticed this term that one thing has been very consistent, that the mayor's staff have presented really good, positive, um, dedicated, passionate folks, willing to serve in these types of capacities. And I have to commend these individuals, um, you know, willing to come back, especially the school board members. I mean, they're coming back to a situation that's very difficult. It's very strident, it's very tense, it's got a lot of stress. You know, they're, they're under the, under the spotlight, as you know. Previous mayor took away the school board's powers, the legislature. And then, now lately, across the city, across the state, took away the rest of the powers, as well as the city council. And now we're at a point where the school board members, their passion and love for the city of Providence really shy during the conversation and the finance meeting. I would say I also welcome all the council members who attend. These folks showed this wonderful, they're willing to, you know, continue to keep, you know, move forward in a positive direction. And they kept on saying one of the things that was motivating and driving the boys across our children and trying to present and create a better school system. So I really have to commend them, and the other gentleman, the other folks who were willing to serve this, the tax... By the way, we're very excited with the word taxes. That's when the review committee. This is sounding exciting, but by the way, when we have you next week now, it will be, I probably will to participate in that. And I just want to commend the administration, and commend the council, committee members, um, these folks that are willing, they're willing to continue to serve. I know you all voted for us. Appreciate it, and it's important that we acknowledge them because those are the folks that get that day-to-day city mechanisms moving forward in a positive fashion. So I would commend them all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Congressman Eglios. Madam Lee.
Transmit the following with recommendations and statements.
I, Mr. President, I make a motion to waive the reading of item twenty-nine and pass on a roll call. Second.
Council President Montos is absent. Acting Council President Correa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anthony.
Aye.
Councilwoman Castillo, is absent. Councilwoman Espinaud.
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilman Egliosi.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerwin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Fortune. Councilwoman Miller.
Aye.
Councilman Narducci is absent. Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Salvatore.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
You have eleven ayes and three absent. The matters, uh, are proved. Item thirty, Committee on Ordinance, Councilwoman Joanne Ryan, Chairwoman. Transmit the following with recommendations and statements.
Madam Lee.
Motion to waive the reading of items thirty through thirty-three and pass it for the first time on a roll call. Seconded motion.
Motion to be made second, Mr. Porter.
Council President Montos is absent. Acting Council President Correa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anthony.
Aye.
Councilwoman Castillo is absent. Councilman Espinaud.
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilwoman, Councilman Egliosi. Councilwoman Kerwin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Fortune.
Aye.
Councilwoman Miller.
Aye.
Councilman Narducci is absent. Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Salvatore.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
You have eleven ayes and three absent. The several matters passed for the first time on a roll call. Item thirty-four, an ordinance and amendment of chapter two.
Mr. President.
Madam Lee.
I make a motion to waive the reading of item thirty-four and refer back to Committee on Ordinance. Second.
Motion to be made second, Madam Lee. For the back Committee on Ordinance, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have.
Item thirty-five, an ordinance and amendment of chapter two.
Madam Lee.
Motion to waive the reading of items thirty-five and thirty-six and pass it for the first time on a roll call. Second.
Council President Montos.
Mr. President.
Councilman Salvatore.
I wanted to rise to speak briefly on item number thirty-six. Uh, when this item was introduced, I let all of you know that the city was not, not charging homeowners the correct amount for violations related to returning trash barrels to their property in timely manner. Uh, this ordinance changes the way we do that, provides for a warning to homeowners for a first offense. Uh, and then, uh, it's a tiered system. So a twenty-five dollar fine would be issued after the first offense, a fifty dollar fine after the uh, second offense, and a hundred dollar fine after the third offense, not to exceed fifteen, a hundred dollars in a, uh, in a fiscal year. This also aims to educate homeowners on what their responsibilities are. So while the city cannot impose a fine on tenants, uh, tenants will be notified of the violation that was issued to the homeowner. Well, we, we hear from constituents all the time that trash barrels are left on the street for three and four days at a time, and nothing is done about it. So this ordinance again aims to strike balance between enforcement and educating residents. Homeowners are more important to, uh, remove their trash bins from the street in a timely manner. I also mentioned that the city was overcharging during that meeting, uh, residents because the technology was not updated based on an amendment that the council made to the ordinance, uh, in twenty-eleven. Upwards of thirty thousand dollars is still owed in refunds because homeowners were overcharged. It's my understanding that we're waiting on the solicitor to sign off on some of this information. Hope that happens sooner rather than later so we can get these refunds into, into the hands of these homeowners in a timely manner. So with that said, I urge passage of item number six. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Porter.
Council President Montos is absent. Acting Council President Correa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anthony.
Aye.
Councilwoman Castillo, absent. Councilman Espinaud.
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilman Egliosi.
Aye.
Is, Councilwoman Harris, Councilwoman Kerwin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Fortune.
Aye.
Councilwoman Miller.
Aye.
Councilman Narducci is absent. Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Salvatore.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
You have eleven ayes and three absent. The several matters passed for the first time on a roll call. Item thirty-seven.
Where is Madam Lee?
Mr. President, uh, motion to waive the reading of item thirty-seven and refer back to the Committee on Ordinance. Second.
Motion to be made second, to refer the item back to the Committee on Ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have.
From the clerk's desk, item thirty-eight.
Mr. President. Motion to waive the reading of item thirty-eight and refer it to Committee on Public Works. Second.
Motion to be made second, to refer the item to the Committee on Public Works. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have. President. Councilman Eglios.
And glad this item is going back to the public, soon to go to public works. I think it's very important, especially when you see our mayor Brown University looking for something for the city of Providence. And as you know, Brown University keeps on growing by leaps and bounds, keeps on taking a more and more profit of the tax rolls, which creates more stress on the tax the other folks that are paying taxes in the city. Where I always get concerned is that Brown keeps on taking and taking and taking. Not only do they take from the city, but they're gonna give, give, yeah. And meanwhile, it's our constituents are the ones that have to keep on paying for Brown Universities. And I know I'm gonna get to say all the great Brown is, and what Brown does, and all due respect, day-to-day living in my neck of the woods and on the other side of the tracks. Folks over there, they don't get the, all the positive whatever Brown does, whatever, whatever free, whatever free toys, whatever shrinkage they give out. My neck of the woods, they just get a tax bill from Brown University. Because every time Brown expands, every time Brown wants something, they keep on giving. And the people in it are suffering. The people have to pay the taxes. The people who are in the most economically challenged parts of the city. Those folks. So I always ask them to be cautious. And Brown needs to understand this is a profit issue. They have a right to grow and make more money. I know it's not taxable, but it doesn't mean they don't make a profit. The point is, they don't show a profit. They pay their employees and their Brown professors lots of money. More, ten times more than folks that I raise. And I'll tell you one thing. The people who are making money aren't sharing it. So I just ask that we always be very cautious. Brown needs to be taking the tax. Now, of course, we have to treat everybody fairly, but we also have to be treated fairly, you know. Me and the city of Providence, we need to be treated fairly. So I just ask, when it takes us up, that we do our due diligence to make sure Brown is a greater partner and a neighbor.
greater partner in a neighborhood, not just the one area, but to the entire city? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Iglesias. That is directed to the Committee on Public Works.
Item thirty-nine, conditions for compensation for injuries and damages.
Refer to the three points of technical assistance.
Communications and reports, item forty.
Mr. President.
Madam Leader.
Motion to waive the reading of items forty and forty-one, received.
Second.
Motion to waive the second, to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Presentation of resolutions and congratulations. Presentation of resolutions and congratulations. Item forty-two.
Mr. President. Motion to waive the reading of item forty-two and pass on a roll call voice vote.
Voice vote.
Motion to waive the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes aye.
Presentation of resolutions and then memorial, item forty-three.
Mr. President. Motion to waive the reading of item forty-two and that pass, and unanimous, rise to the board.
Second.
Mr. President, just very quickly, for my council colleagues, on your desk is a binder. The binder is the Tax Stabilization Agreement Portfolio, created by Dante Malini, who was the compliance officer. The finance committee thought it was important that we start getting the council members up to speed on where they are, all the tax stabilizations, and it will be amended as he provides additional information as we move forward. So it's a good first start, take a look at it, I think it'd be very helpful understanding what's going on. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. President, seeing there's no further business before this honorable body, I make a motion to adjourn until our next regular scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Motion to waive the second, to stand adjourned. If we can have our Councilman Taylor, Councilwoman Kerwin, Leader Ryan, and Councilwoman Harris in the public, if they can, I'll say that.